We're going to start with our regular land use meeting we hold the last Thursday of the month. Mr. Carpenter, are you ready?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Commissioners. All of our items are quasi judicial this morning.
Okay. Anyone who anticipates testifying on any of these items, if you would, stand at this time to be sworn in. Do you swear, oh, sorry, and raise your hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you will provide to this board will be the truth? Thank you. Whenever you come forward, if you would, state and spell your last name and state that you've been sworn in. Have any of the Commissioners had any ex parte communications on any of these items? Yes. So Commissioner Nipper, any others? Okay. Commissioner Nipper, did you provide your form to the clerks? Would those ex parte communications influence your decision making in any way? Okay. We're ready to proceed.
Mac, before you start, would you pull the mic a little closer? Or step a little closer, whatever it's.
Well, I may have to lean in a little bit closer.
Yeah, that's better. Thank you.
It's permanently affixed to the podium here now. But I'll try to speak up. Good morning. The first item on our agenda this morning is the Bear Creek Phase 3B through F conceptual request to approve by final order. It's been reviewed by Bob Beranti, and this is a continuation of the conceptual portion of this project from the December 18th BCC meeting. You may recall that this board had some questions and it asked Public Works to further investigate a drainage easement adjacent to the proposed project, along with confirming that the stormwater as proposed met the requirements of the Conference of Plan and Land Development Code. The applicant is here to present their case. We also have representatives from Public Works, both to speak to the engineering and the environmental aspects. Who would you prefer to hear from first?
Let's hear from the applicant first.
Thanks, sir.
Commissioner David Depew, D-E-P-E-W. I am a principal with Morris Depew Associates. Our offices are over in Grand Boulevard in Miramar Beach. You may recall from the last time we were here, we received technical approval on 3A, which is the green area here on the Bear Creek project, and we are here before you this afternoon, or this morning, I should say, to request the conceptual approval on Phases 3B through 3F. One of the issues that arose was related to stormwater management along Fluffy Landing Road. We've taken a look at that rather extensively, and because I don't speak engineer, I'm going to let Mr. Morris, the project engineer, get up here, and I've warned him not to get too heavily into engineer speak, but he is going to have to give you a little bit of background in terms of the stormwater management with regard to this particular area, which you see over here on this board. And the request before you today is simply the conceptual approval of these latter phases of this project. The technical approval will have to come back before you, and any issues that are not addressed at that time, we can address. But the idea here is to get all of those issues on the table so that we can address that as part of the technical approval when that comes before you. If I can, Mr. Morris, would you come up and give them a briefing?
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Bill Morris. I'm the engineer of record for the Bear Creek Phase 3 project.
Please spell your last name.
Yes, sir. If you will, during the last meeting, we were directed by the Commission to go back and take a look at the stormwater management design and the analysis of the basin that the project is being proposed in. And you can see on the exhibit that I have here to my right, and I have some handouts for you as well, if I may. These are just copies of the board that I have up here to my right, that'd be a little easier for you to see. What you're looking at is a color themed map of the basin that the project sits in. And the colors represent the elevation changes from the top end of the basin that are illustrated in the light colors, the red end of the spectrum, and the lower end of the basin elevations that are represented in the blues and purples. So the water, when the rain falls in this particular location, the water moves from the light colors to the dark colors. And you can see very, illustrated pretty clearly, that the creek is really well defined south and west of the project in the blue and purple. And you can see the path where the flowways occur between those points, between the top of the basin north of 3280 and the south end of the basin. As part of that, we also took a look at Fluffy Landing Road. And for those who are familiar with it, this exhibit that I've put here to my right shows the culverts that are installed just past the bend where Fluffy Landing starts to turn from an east-west alignment back to the south again. These are two existing 36-inch culverts, and they currently provide a drainage connection for the water that comes under the two culverts in 3280 along the west side of Mr. Sammets' property and convey water to Bear Creek. These culverts, as our understanding from our conversations with Public Works, are coming up for scheduled replacement, and we were asked by Public Works as a part of our work to look at whether or not an upsizing of those pipes would be of any benefit to the basin. And we did an extensive amount of modeling for this project, both during our initial design and going back since the Commission asked us to reevaluate this. And this book sitting over here on the table represents the summary of the calculations. The full version, my client would have shot me had I printed out, because it was about 3,600 pages long. So, point being that it was an extensive amount of analysis that we did. And we looked specifically at whether these culverts have or need more capacity to, when they are replaced, that would be of benefit primarily to Mr. Sammets, but also to everything else in that part of the basin. And our conclusion is that there is very, very, very little loss in these existing culverts, that they have been appropriately sized for their demand up to and including a 100-year storm event, that they do not block water by themselves, provided they always stay cleared out, and they appear to be in pretty good operating condition at the moment, in spite of their age. So we can't tell that there's any impediment that exists to the flow of drainage moving through the project. And I created another version of the exhibit that you have before you, in your hands. This is a blow-up of the area around the northern portion of Fluffy Landing Road, where you can see the flowway and the culverts that cross under both 3280 and Fluffy Landing And this mapping that we did is based on the DEP's LiDAR mapping, their aerial topographic mapping of this area, and it was created from using the data that they provide for the basin. And it shows pretty clearly that in the location where Fluffy Landing Road comes from 3280 and starts to turn from a north-south roadway to an east-west roadway, this location right here, that when Fluffy Landing Road was originally built, it bifurcated a wetland that was in that location. And it's that wetland that holds water on that portion of Mr. Sammets' site, just due to the fact that it's a low area. And the water is cut off by the roadway on the south side and on the elevations in this part of the site that are higher, and not by much, probably six inches or plus or minus of change through there. So it's a subtle difference, but it is enough to hold water for periods of time on that particular piece of property. One of the things that we've talked about with Public Works was when Fluffy Landing Road is, as a part of this project, there was a condition in the planned unit development for Fluffy Landing Road to be repaved. And when we do so, Public Works asked that we take the cross slope of the road and direct the sheet flow of water from Fluffy Landing away from Mr. Sammets' property. And we're happy to be able to accommodate that. So there is some amount of water that we can prevent from being directed onto his property, and we can certainly include that when we come back for technical approval for that particular phase.
Bill, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Talking about what you were taking the sheet flow and moving it away from his property over there to the northwest, or however you want to describe it.
Yes, sir.
Well, by doing so, wouldn't that push that water into a part of the development?
No, sir.
I thought, according to what I've got here, there's, appears to be six or eight lots that watered right on Fluffy Landing. And maybe it ain't. Yeah, that's what I.
This area right here is where I'm referring to. The lots that we have are set off of the road. There's actually a dedication of right-of-way that we are including to the county with the plating of the lots in that location, to expand Fluffy Landing Road to a 50-foot right-of-way. Right now, it's a prescriptive easement that the county owns, and so we're, our client is dedicating that particular part of it to the county, so it will not be altered. We will have the ability to put in, divide, swell, and burn in that location between the project and the roadway that'll keep the water off of the lots interior to the project. And again, these are all details that we will have worked out for technical approval.
So if the water's not going to the north, and it's not going on these lots, where does the water go?
The water will be directed along here and into the wetland that historically received all this water, and it all goes into Bear Creek.
And who owns that property?
The portion, there are portions of it that our client currently owns. This. The boundary shown on this map, where the colors are clear, not the parts that are screened back, but the parts that are clear are all areas inside our client's ownership at present.
Okay, if I understand what you said, those lots that are adjacent to the road, you'd have a swell or some other type of conveyance to take it basically to the east, to that wetland area.
Yes, sir.
Which would drain down through that, on the backside or the north side of part of your development, coming through that little green area.
It'll come through here and down to the flowway that develops to Bear Creek in this location.
That's all I got.
Thank you.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Reading the minutes, have you worked with DEP and received any information from DEP? From the last minutes, it says, "From our staff, we're concerned that the DEP may not have received all the facts and said the area would require mitigation and permitting before any work can be done."
We currently have an application to the southwest, I'm sorry, to Northwest Florida Water Management District. We're going back and have a resubmital that they are considering at this particular point in time, but we don't have an environmental resource permit that has been issued yet, so we can't start construction just yet. But we have submitted this particular detail, and they have more or less agreed with our methodology for the analysis and the design of the project. At this point, we're just dealing with details.
Let's keep this and the questions to the conceptual plan.
Yes, sir.
The technical stuff will come at a later time. I think we're going to get tied up on the technical issues, but all we're here today is to decide on the conceptual plan. The fact is, you are working with Northwest Florida Management, and you will have to have a permit from DEP before anything can happen.
Yes, sir.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And you'll also have to come back for technical approval.
Right. That is also correct.
This is just to approve the conceptual plan.
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything else?
Yes, I do. So with regard to the conceptual plan, have you worked with the City of Freeport and their, just even on the conceptual side, are they in agreeance of the conceptual plans with the City of Freeport?
At this point, we have modified our submittal to the City of Freeport to only relate to the technical approval items that the Board, that the Commission approved back in December, that is Phase 3A. I believe that that resolves most of the items, but based on the most recent response that we've received from the City of Freeport, they have indicated that they still have concerns over the potential for paving over their lines on Fluffy Landing Road. But again, we believe that this is a detail that we can address when we come back for technical approval from the county.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Bill, considering the conceptual, I'd like for you to just give us an update on what you were asking this board to do concerning the concept of your project. I know at one time, if I can, 2006, '07, it was approved at a certain level, and I think y'all have come back and want to modify the concept of how many units and all that's going in there. Can you just brief the board as to what you're asking for specifically today concerning your concept?
Yes, sir. What we're asking for today is the conceptual approval of Phases 3B through 3F, which Phase 3A is illustrated in green, and all the other color error readings on this map are the other phases, 3B through 3F.
Okay. Bill, I am pretty visual, like the visual stuff, so as you go through your presentation here, if you would point to and say, "This was 100, now it's 50," or whatever the case may be.
In terms of the units?
Yes, sir.
Sure. B, and I apologize, I don't have the numbers memorized, but Phase 3B includes 55 lots. Phase 3A was 91. Phase 3A was 91 lots. Phase 3B is 54 lots in the blue. Phase 3C is 66 lots. That's here in this purple color, light purple. Phase 3D is 31 units. That's here in the orange. 3E is 62 units. That's this dark purple. And Phase 3F is 48 units, and that's here in the light red.
All right. Are those numbers a reduction of the previous submittal and approval?
They are.
Each parcel?
Those numbers represent what is allowed by the planned unit development and was approved by the Board in 2006.
Six.
And it's important to note that this plan preserves more wetlands than the original plan does. We only had, we had less than a half acre of wetland impacts. With this plan, there were considerably more wetlands impacted in the original plan.
So what is the new conceptual plan? The numbers?
These, the original conceptual approval that was a part of the planned unit development that the Board approved back in 2006, looks like, is shown on this exhibit here on my left hand, as contrasted by the one Dr. Depew is holding here on the right. And I apologize for not bringing handouts for these, but this particular project was 302 single-family units and had 49 multifamily units. But as you can see, it didn't provide nearly as much stormwater management capacity and had considerably more wetland impacts.
Just one second. What's the new total of lots right here on your left?
These are all single-family, and there's 351 lots.
351 total. Compared to what?
351, but some were multifamily as well as single-family.
Is there any difference in the lot sizes?
There, these lots are slightly larger in most instances. I won't say in all instances, because the lot sizes are uniform throughout, as opposed to the former plan, which had some larger lots in some of the other areas, but it also had multifamily in some of the other areas.
So how, the lot sizes are the same, and there's no multifamily units?
How did we do it?
How you?
It was a redesign out of this grid system, but the former plan was to use the natural topography and the natural features, and as it turned out, it's just a matter of how the design worked to allow more preservation acreages.
So we're impacting less wetlands?
Correct.
Yes.
Well, as you come back for your technical review, one thing that I'm really going to be looking at is your stormwater retention and runoff, and how it's not going to impact, excuse me, areas south of there, other properties flooding in the area.
Sure.
So make sure that y'all really get into that.
Yes, sir.
Piggybacking on that.
Yes, sir.
Where, could you hold that back up, the color coding? I like visual stuff, too. Could you tell us where, from B through F, where y'all are planning on putting the stormwater at?
Phases A, C, B, and D have two outfalls that are along this braided flowway that comes through here. The areas south of the project are upland, and so the topography of the land historically moves from south to north in this particular location towards this flowway, this wetland. These other areas have outfalls. Phase 3E has an outfall that discharges into this portion of the flowway. 3F has an outfall right about here, and another one for the smaller pods up in this location that take advantage, if you recall from the exhibit that I handed out earlier, there's two channels that come through here from culverts under 3280. That's where the historical flow direction, where the water goes from those particular directions, and Phase, actually, that's it. Those are the different outfall locations for these sub-basins.
So basically, it all goes to Bear Creek, which goes to Chalk Hatcher Bay?
Yes, sir. And that's where the project flows to historically.
But you're talking like lawns and fertilizer and all sorts of stuff that are going into the bay?
That's true, but we are doing stormwater management and water quality treatment that's required by the Water Management District as a part of this system. So each of these basins, it's not a situation where the sites just are just let go into the creek. They are, the water is directed into water management ponds where we provide, they are designed to provide water quality treatment prior to the stormwater then being discharged into the flowway and the wetlands. This is all being done in accordance with Northwest Florida Water Management District regulations.
Any more questions?
I just have a comment. I understand it's conceptual, but I think I would feel better if, knowing that the water and sewer portion of it, that is Freeport's responsibility, along with the developer, was solid. And right now, I don't feel confident that you have a relationship where Freeport City or the water and sewer management feels that this project, even at the conceptual stage, is acceptable for them.
Just to clarify, and we have had, sorry, some discussions with the City of Freeport about their concerns with the paving of the road. There are no requirements in our comp plan or land development code, though, that would prevent the developer from moving forward because of that issue with the City of Freeport. The previous approval required them to pave the road. They're still willing to do that, but we don't have a provision in our comp plan or land development code that could stop them at this point. Now, having sewer availability, that's something that would have to be solved at the time that they come in for a DO, right, Mac? they come in for a DO, right, Mac?
Matt Carpenter for the Planning Department, that is correct. That would have, that would be a mandatory requirement for approval of the technical phases.
But at this stage, we don't have a provision that could hold them up just for that, that matter.
That's correct. Any more for the applicant?
This may be, this may be a technical and not a conceptual. If it's a technical, ignore it. I mean, I will draw it, but watch the plan on how to get, on how to collect the stormwater. Is it all going to be swales and ditches, or is there piping and, you know, French drains or something like that? How is the, what's the method?
We, we, the design internal to the project includes a storm sewer system throughout the, the roadways.
Piping and?
Yes, sir. It'll all be piped.
Curbing and drains and the whole?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any more? Thank you. Do we have any comments from the audience? Come ahead. Please state your name and spell your last name for the clerk.
Alex Ruchalo. It's R-O-U-C-H-A-L-E-A-U. I'm a project manager with Dewberry Engineers, and I'm here on behalf of the City of Freeport. Just wanted to briefly state a couple things. First off, regarding Phase 3A, we received revised plans from the developer on January 24th. We reviewed them, and we resubmitted comments to them on February 7th, so they still have some outstanding water and sewer utility-related comments that have not been addressed for that Phase 3A. We believe they're pretty reasonable comments, so I don't have an issue with them being addressed, but there still are outstanding comments, which I can provide you guys with.
I agree on that, Mr. Chairman. I think from what I can hear from the board, that when we get to the technical review stage, there's going to be a lot of questions, and we would expect a lot of answers from the applicant. So I know where you're coming from on the technical side of it, but I think, Mr. Chairman, we should focus in on whether to approve the conceptual design.
Right. You will, you will certainly have time to, to have your comments in the record for the technical part, and believe me, it's gonna, gonna be a lot more closely looked at as we go down the line.
Yes. This, this is actually for Phase 3A that was already issued a DO, so I just wanted to make that clear. And then regarding, sir?
Okay.
What was your opinion about these things? It just, it still has technical comments with the City of Freeport that have not been addressed.
Matt, can you speak to the DO? Yes, sir, please.
With regard to the technical approval of Phase 3A, before the project can proceed, they have to have concurrence with the, the utility design from the appropriate utility companies, and that has to be provided before the pre-construction conference can be completed for them to begin construction on Phase 3A.
But what he is referring to and what you just talked about, is it necessary for us to, to approach his, the technical questions that they have?
No, sir. His comments relate to Phase 3A, which has already received technical approval. It has not yet received development order inspection approval at the pre-construction conference, and that's what he's speaking about, and that will occur before they can begin construction on Phase 3A. Those comments don't relate to what's before you today.
Okay.
And then just another comment or two on behalf of the city. We, the city does have some significant concerns with the additional phases, so I just wanted to put that forward for the record. And as well as what Mr. Morris stated regarding working with the city to address some of the issues, mainly the issue of locating or relocating the utilities that are currently under Fluffy Landing. In his comments dated January 17th, he states, and I quote, "Further, there is no requirement for the applicant to relocate any of the utilities located in Fluffy Landing Road, and there is no intention to do so." So the city does have an issue with those utilities being paved over, and I know he stated here that he was working with the city to resolve that issue and didn't see it as a problem moving forward, but based on that comment we received, the city sees it as a significant issue, so.
Mr. Chairman?
That's all I have.
Would the city be amenable to, if there was right-of-way existent, moving those from, to the, either shoulder?
At the developer's cost, yes, but not at the city's cost, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. They have no issue with the utilities being relocated. They have an issue with who's paying for it. And then if the utilities are not relocated, who's paying to repair the road when they do fail, so.
The utilities, yeah?
Yeah.
Do you have water and sewer under the road?
Water and sewer, and Regional has some significant utilities under the middle as well, which we've not received any comments from Regional yet regarding the Phase 3A submittal, and I assume they'll be in the loop as well with the technical review for the other phases, but.
I'm going to make an assumption that there wasn't enough right-of-way that these things were put in on the shoulder at the time, so they went down the middle of the road.
There's also significant wetlands on, on the sides, so it's going to be a, a large wetland impact to relocate them, so.
Could you tell me who made the decision to put the infrastructure down the middle of the road?
Um, no, that was, that was before my time, so.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Cliff, you want to comment on that?
Good morning, Commissioners. Yep. Cliff Nauer, last name K-N-A-U-E-R, Dewberry.
Were you here when we swore under the again?
I was not.
Okay. Raise your hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony of the five members swore it was true?
I do. Yes, sir. There's actually a lot of utilities. Regional's transmission mains are also there. They have, I think, a 24-inch water main, and I think also an 18-inch water main run down that road as well. And so because there was no additional right-of-way other than prescriptive rights on the roadway, there was no other place to put utilities. And so, in fact, I think that the applicant is the owner of the adjacent land that would be required to put utilities outside of the right-of-way, and so there is no.
They've agreed to give, give land for the right-of-way, so. You weren't here when they said that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just, I just, I just heard the question, why, you know, why did the utilities go where they went? That was the only place that they could go, because that was the only prescriptive rights that the county has.
Who gave them, who gave them permission?
Well, so the idea with a prescriptive easement is not that we have anyone's permission, but that we've been maintaining the road, a certain portion of the road for a certain period of time.
Put the utilities in. Who gave, who gave them the permission to put a 24-inch main down the middle of our county road?
And an 18. I couldn't tell you. You know, that's a question for Regional Utilities. But that's two of their main supply lines. Those are not, those are not lines that people can drink off of. Those are transmission lines that go all the way to the wellfields up on Highway 331. And so those are the same lines that are underneath the bay.
Yeah. Those are huge.
Yeah, they're, they're gigantic lines. Yes, sir.
Let's leave Regional that out. They're not here to speak for themselves, so. Any more from the audience? Steve, you're hiding over there behind the sign. I can't see if you got your hand up or not.
I appreciate Scott and Greg coming out, looking at, addressing the concerns on the property if they do as they say they're going to do. I don't have any additional comments. The only thing I would, I would say is the, the covert on Fluffy Landing, I believe, needs to be bigger, only because I've been there on two main storm events, and I stood there and watched the water from the north side go over the road to the south side, and there's about a two-foot variance in water height. I'm not going to argue with modeling, but I'll just tell you what I saw. Other than that, that's all I have to say.
Okay. Does the applicant have any? You want some time to answer the questions that have been raised?
Dave Dupue with the record. I'm not sure there's an answer to this. We've been ongoing, we've had ongoing discussions with the representatives from the City of Freeport about the utilities. We understand that we're on the hook for paving the road, and we're more than happy to do that, and we're, we have no problem in terms of, of doing the cross-slope that we discussed, that Mr. Morris discussed, in terms of modifying the sheet flow coming off the roadway. Relocation of those utilities is not something that was part of the original approval, and in fact, the utilities were placed in that road right-of-way after the approval was granted on this project and the developer agreed to pave the road. Now, that was before my time and before the current owner's time on this, and I'm certain there's going to be a resolution to this. I, I can't stand here today and tell you there is a resolution at this point, but I can tell you that from a conceptual standpoint, until we get a general approval conceptually on these latter phases, we don't know exactly what we're trying to get approved or disapproved. So that's why we're here before you today, and we will work those issues out one way or another by the time we come back for conceptual approval for these latter phases. We understand that's got to be done. We recognize that, and we're in that process. Other than that, if you've got any other questions, I'll be happy to try and answer them.
Board, have any other questions? Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question for Cliff.
Cliff? Keep this on the conceptual phase, though. We're not going to get in the middle of a technical review.
Cliff, are there any other concerns, just based on conceptual, before the city would like to move forward? Are there any other major concerns before the conceptual is approved about this project, conceptually?
Yeah, so, so I understand that they're getting conceptual approval for all their phases.
Right.
And that they will have to come back for each phase as a major development order? Is that correct?
Yes.
And so I'm sure that there's a way to work out some of these issues. We've provided in writing all the comments that we've had related to utilities on the project. We've provided all those in writing. I'm sure there's a way that all of it can be worked out at some point, but that's, that'll have to be done through the major development process. You know, I think the single, single largest issue is the, is the roadway issue that was discussed earlier. And I, I just don't know how you get around that, that particular issue, but, you know, as each phase comes in, I'm sure that there's a way that it can be handled, but, you know, the city is, is very concerned about their lines being paved over, and I think Regional is expressed the same.
Thank you.
Again, don't speak for Regional. They're not here.
Yeah, I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you.
But again, this is a conceptual phase.
Yes, sir.
This is not the technical phase.
Yes, sir.
That stuff will be worked out before it's approved by the board.
Yes, sir.
Or, or disapproved. It's not going to, this, this is not what we're here for today, to talk about the technical part of it. We're here to, to approve what looks to me like a better project than it was before. And so that's what we're here to approve, just the conceptual stage of it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Cliff. Anyone else? What's the board's wishes?
Much as I don't like to mess with conceptual approval, but I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the present conceptual.
Second of that. Second of that. Any more discussion on the board? Any more discussion in the audience? Danny, you have something?
I'm, whether it's a cons, I'm, I don't like conceptual things either, because it puts you down a road to where you're going to approve something, and I'm not in favor of approving stuff where the stormwater goes into the bay, period. And that's, and that's just where, I don't care if it's a concept or a technical. I don't, I think we're just adding another expense to the county in the future to approve something that's stormwater, because the state's eventually going to stop that. And we're going to be holding the bag for millions of dollars more of stuff to fix something that's not our fault. So that's, if you approve the concept, we're going to be back here for technical before long, and at some point, you got to say, the stormwater's got to go somewhere besides the bay. And that's where I'm at.
Understand, Commissioner. With the bay being entirely in my district, along with Chalk Hatch River, I understand the importance of trying to make sure we got a, we're doing what we can to protect it. That's why I'm thinking when we get to technical review, the engineer record over there is going to have to convince the five of us up here that whatever stormwater design he has, has that water treated prior to entering into Bear Creek and subsequently the bay. So, but obviously, that's not where, what we're here for right now, but I think your questions can be answered at that time. I know I'm going to have some, so just forewarn, be prepared, and come up with the best solution that you can.
I think we're all concerned about that, with that, as again, as Commissioner Chapman said, this is the conceptual plan. I think they can go with the old conceptual plan, which is not as good as this one, is not as environmentally sound as this one is, and they will have a lot of questions to answer when they come back. But for today, this is just the conceptual plan. Any more questions?
No, but I got.
You'll have plenty of time to ask.
I got a serious problem with stormwater going in the bay, and I don't see, and I don't see, I see sending a strong message now.
What's the board's wishes? We already had that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay. Three to two. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item, number two, Sunset Key cottages. This is an application to plat previously approved eight-unit, single-family residential development. We requesting that this item be continued to March 28th to allow the applicant time to get the MLR properly signed by utility companies.
Motion to approve continuing this to March 28, 2019.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, they nay.
Thank you, Commissioners. That moves us to item number three, the Santa Rosa Commerce Park. This is a request to approve by final order. It's been reviewed by Bob Baronte. It's a major development order application submitted by JP Engineering on behalf of R&amp;M Property Acquisition, proposing to develop and construct a postal annex and warehouse on approximately 5.91 acres with the future land use and village mixed-use projects located at the northwest corner of US Highway 98 and Church Street, and identified by the parcel number in your package. We'd like to request a staff report, be entered into evidence, and the applicant is here to present their case.
My name is Matthew Parker. I'm the civil engineer, project manager, P-A-R-K-E-R with JP Engineering, on behalf of R&amp;M Property Acquisition. The, the project that you see before, we've worked very closely with your, with your staff and addressed all of the technical issues, and addressed and, and met all of the land development codes required to develop this property. We're, we're excited and proud of the, of the project. I think it's a, a necessary service that our area needs. The, the use of the property is going to be a post office distribution annex in the rear. On the front is a retail space. At this point, we do not know if, if it will be a United States Postal Service retail service in the front portion of the project, just because the postal service is not yet fully committed to that. We're still working on that. So at this time, it may or may not be a retail service there, but we're definitely committed to the distribution annex warehouse in the rear for the postal service. The feedback that we've got from the postal service is that the current facility is, is underserved. This facility brings an increased level of security and an increased level of service for the postal service. On the east side of the property is Church Street, and there's a strip of land there that is not owned by the developer. It's owned by, by the state forestry. It's the, it's TIF property, which lends itself nicely to this type of development at this location, because it provides even an additional level of buffering on. at this location, because it provides even an additional level of buffering on, on that corner. So you've got a strip of TIF land, and then you also set back from that is, is the required buffering for the project. So from a visual aesthetic perspective, I, I think it's really, really good for the type of use that, that we're bringing to the site. With that, I would answer any questions that you might have.
Go ahead.
So this is, what, what you're saying is this is going to be the replacement for the post office at the old Cano Square?
Yes, sir.
The board knows they need that.
It's a, a modern facility that, again, it increases security, and I think all the way around, a, a good, good project for, for everybody, for the area.
And taking into consideration, I'm assuming semis are going to be coming in here in the turnaround and getting into the plaza from the west side.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. If you look on the rear of the annex, there's quite a large turnaround area there that's kind of tucked in behind the building, which again, is tucked in behind an additional level of buffering on the east side of the property. And, and so, yes, ma'am, to answer your question.
And that's a turn lane there at the bottom?
I'm sorry, sir?
If there's a turn lane that goes into Alpha ninety-eight?
Yes, sir, that's correct. The developer, at this time, the, the traffic that's generated from the project does not reach the level of requiring a turn lane. The, the developer, at, at his own cost and at his, I don't know, desire, or, or, you know, decided to put the turn lane in anyway, just because it's better, it creates better access, it gets people off of the travel lane on that westbound on Highway ninety-eight. So all the way around, I think it's, it's a responsible development.
Is that it? Do you have any other questions? Any questions from the audience? Seeing none, what's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do you have further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Thank you, Commissioners. That brings us to item number four, the Origins, Origins Crossings. This is a request to approve by final order. It's been reviewed by Renee Bradley. Major development order submitted by O'Connell and Associates on behalf of the Watersound Company, requesting approval to develop two hundred and seventeen multifamily apartments on approximately nineteen point eight seven acres with the future land use of Coastal Vi, Coastal Village One. It's located on the north side of U.S. Highway ninety-eight, approximately one, one quarter mile east of the Watersound Parkway, and it's identified by the parcel number in your package. We'd like to request the staff report be entered into evidence, and the applicant is here to present their case.
We accept the staff report in evidence. Robert, you ready?
Yes, sir. Good morning. Robert Carroll, McNeil Carroll Engineering, R.O.B.E.R.T.C.A.R.R.O.L.L. I have been sworn in. Originally, the project was submitted by O'Connell and Associates midway through the project. They, we took over the project, so that's why it says O'Connell and Associates is submitting it. We are here requesting final approval. We have gone through T.R.C., the Design Review Board, and the Planning Board, all making, I believe they were all unanimous approvals. It is a multifamily project on the north side. It's just on the east side of Watersound Parkway. It is, consists of two hundred and seventeen units. We have thirteen buildings. All but two are two-story, and only the two in the back on the north side are four-stories. They all meet the height criteria. Typically, on a project this size, you would have more units, but they just felt that it was better to space them out. We have a very large wet detention basin that's located on the east side, which will work both for treatment, attenuation, and as an amenity. We've got walking trails all the way around it, so enhances the area, take advantage of that. We've got garage parking scattered throughout the development, so there is some enclosed parking. The parking on this, the way your code sets up, you have one and a half space for one bedrooms, two for two bedrooms, and three for three bedrooms, which requires a total of four hundred and thirty-seven spaces. We're at four fifty-six, so we even exceed that. I wanted to make sure they were overparked. There is a clubhouse and amenity there and a pool. We think it's a great project for that area. We just respectfully ask for approval, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
I don't have anything right now. Mr. Chairman, I'd like the staff report reflected. This is in District One, not District Five. You'd like to make that correction for the record?
Everything on the north side of ninety-eight, from three thirty-one to the county lines in District One.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask a question. So the only thing I see regarding the project is the South Walton mosquito control, so that was the, one of the comments, very wet area as we, as we move forward, just aggressively regarding the mosquitoes. It says it's an extremely wet area in Walton County, won't be able to service it.
Got you. Okay.
Just one of those things to take into consideration.
Okay.
I guess that would be a joint effort.
Any other questions? Seeing none, any questions from the audience? Seeing none, what's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
With the staff, with the conditions?
With conditions, right.
Second that. What condition?
Any other comments? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Robert, could you wait just a minute? We're going to take a ten-minute break and be back about, according to the clock, about ten oh five.